Now, we are going to move on to item number 14, which is, someone just mentioned this, actually. I know the supervisor's met this evening, but there is still time for us to weigh in on the plans for redistricting. And so this item would have us adopting a resolution providing feedback to the Alameda County Board of Supervisors on the proposed draft 2021 redistricting maps. And we'll start with a report from City Manager McAdoo.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And we brought this item forward at the request of a couple of council members and also our county supervisor, who also asked that the council weigh in, given that there are some significant changes in the draft maps that are being circulated in terms of representation from the Board of Supervisors, the County Board of Supervisors. So, the staff report presents what are currently, well, up until late last week, there were three options that the County Board of Supervisors was considering for the redistricting after the 2020 census. And then, based on some community feedback, there was a fourth visualization that was added last week. So, we were able to include that in the packet. This is kind of like real time as we're moving through this process. The Board of Supervisors was having a meeting this evening to discuss, further discuss the options. They will be holding their first public hearing on December 7th. So, we at least needed to get a sense from the council tonight on preferred options. And then, we can transmit that to the Board of Supervisors. If the council doesn't feel like they can come to consensus on a single map, one process we might suggest for the council this evening is for each of you to rank your maps and their preferences in real time. And then, we can sort of tally that and transmit it to the Board of Supervisors. So, that's just another option if it doesn't look like the council is in consensus on which of the four maps are preferred. And I do, see if I can get the technology to work here. I do have the maps that I can share on the Zoom screen. And we'll see if I can get these up here, maybe. Okay, I believe. There we go. So, here is, can folks see that on the screen? Great. So, this is the existing supervisory districts. You'll see currently Hayward is contained wholly within District 2 along with Union City, all of Newark, and then parts of Fremont. The first option, let's see if I can zoom this in here a little bit. There we go. This is testing my technology skills right now. So, here, this is the first visualization. And you'll see this pink line here that kind of goes through Sanol. And the mayor did point out to our county supervisor that they missed actually labeling Hayward as a city on the three maps, which we were quite displeased with. But on the latest, the fourth option, they did put Hayward on the map. So, this first visualization is one that remains almost identical to the current district boundaries. You'll see a slight change here in Sanol, a slight change in West Oakland, and also Castro Valley, Ashland. So, this is probably the most, Visualization A is probably the most similar to the current state of affairs. Visualization B, basically, you'll see here changes, these pink lines are the existing districts. See if I can describe this. So, what would happen here is Hayward would be split in two, but District 1, which would include Dublin, Livermore Pleasant, and Sanol, would also come into Hayward and basically take a good chunk of the Hayward Hills and South Hayward into District 1. So, basically, that whole, South Hayward and the Hill area would then be represented by Supervisor Halbert's district currently. And the balance of Hayward would then go into Supervisor, what is now Supervisor Miley's district. And Supervisor Vaillée would then move farther south. It's easier to say it by name so folks know versus districts numbers. Visualization C, again, basically changes. So, Hayward becomes partially in, let's see if I can say this. So, stays mostly within Supervisor Vaillée's district, comes up here a little bit. And then Supervisor Miley's district would come down a little bit further south. So, again, more of a split, but still very similar. And then, this is attachment, or this is the visualization D, which is the latest one. Also stays fairly similar, but again, splits Hayward between Supervisor Vaillée's district, who he would take a good chunk of South Hayward and West Hayward. And then Supervisor Miley would get a good chunk of Northern Hayward and the Hayward Hills. So, those are the four visualizations. Happy to answer questions. Again, this process, I'm sure Councilmember Lambnun, I know, has been tracking it very, in a lot more detail than I have and probably can answer more of the questions than I probably can. But I will try to respond to questions as possible. And then, we're happy to take feedback from the council. And I'm going to stop sharing my screen so everyone can see each other, but happy to bring up these maps again.
Okay, great, yeah. Anybody who wants to see one of those maps, I think you can get it back. But, let's see. Oh, yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Did you happen to get any updates from tonight's meeting?
I have not received any updates yet, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
And I just want to take this opportunity to thank you, Councilmember Lambnun, for keeping this in front of all of us for the last few months, actually, I think. And I have to say that after my eyes glazed over a little bit of some of that stuff at the beginning, but I am now really getting used to looking at these maps and thinking about this issue. And I'm ready to make some comments tonight. But first, we'll go to Councilmembers Armanio. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Did you have a question, Councilmembers Armanio? Because I do, I'm going to open public comment on this too.
Questions first, correct?
Question, yeah. And then, I want to open public comment.
Just to be clear in my mind, both B and C split Hayward, correct?
It's actually, D splits Hayward.
B splits it, and C also.
So, it's B, C, and D. Although, C is not as, yeah, B, C, and D all split Hayward.
All right, okay, that was, yeah. D is also split? I wasn't sure about D.
Yeah, D splits Hayward. It comes down, I'll just, I'll pull it up real quick. Hold on, so everyone can see it. This is D. Okay, so the pink line is the existing boundary here. It goes through Fairview. This, see this dotted line here? It's a very small piece of Hayward. Oh, wait, no, there's, it's actually here. It comes up here. Between this pink line and this brown line, that would be in Supervisor Miley's district. And that is, there's, Jackson is right here. Kind of comes through, it comes through there.
And that's Mission, I believe.
Yeah, Mission is right here, yeah. So, it would be mostly North Hayward and the Hills and most of downtown.
Would you mind me saying that I'd rather not have Hayward be split? That's a question.
So, we, well, I'm happy to weigh in. Do we want to just answer technical questions first? And then, we can talk about some of the pros and cons when we have to hear public comment?
Okay.
Yeah, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and open up public comment because we do have a member of the public who wants to speak on that. And that is Mimi Dean.
Hey, how are you guys again? Hey, listen, I just wanted to tell you that I just came from the redistricting meeting. And the map that they sent forward was actually Map A. And so, it looks like it's going to be Map A. And it was a five, five votes were all for Map A. And they are going to be doing a little tweaking with it. So, I'm hearing some comments now about Hayward wanting to stay in 1. So, I just wanted to let you guys know that so you don't have to look at other stuff that's not going to happen. So, it's Map A for now. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you for the update, although I don't think that that is a final decision, is it?
Oh.
No, it's that, the public hearing is officially on December 7th. So, if we wanted to provide an alternate that the Hayward Council supported, we could still provide that in advance of the December 7th public hearing. That's just the one option, I think, that the Board wanted to move forward and finalize as the preferred recommendation.
That's right. That's right. So, I just wanted to say that, though, so you know.
No, we appreciate that. We appreciate the report because we've all been tied up this evening and weren't able to follow that.
This is my fourth, this is my fourth meeting of the day, so I can relate.
Great.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you for your attention. And then, we do have, actually have another speaker, Michael Freed.
Hi again. Yeah, I was just sitting in and leaning in on this last comment. Yeah, I left the meeting too, right after it was over. And they had made the recommendation and voted 5-0 to. Not the adoption of it in total, but to keep it open for tweaking, as they kept using the word tweaking. And so, there's still plenty of time, I think, the next few weeks to get Hayward City Council's opinions on the thing. Yeah, anyway, that's what they've got so far. Single one, I think, at this point. Still options to possibly have a second draft map. They're not tied to just one, according to the council, to the legal council. Anyway, yeah, just an update. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no further hands raised from the public, we'll go back to, we'll close public comment and go back to council. And I'll go to Councilmembers Armanio.
Mayor, thank you. My last comment, it was not a question, but I neglected to thank colleague Lambnun for all her hard work on this. And I suppose this is the best time to do it again. So, colleague Lambnun, thank you. Very good. Posting everywhere. I did not want, I do not want Hayward to be split. So, I move that we send a note to our supervisors that we opt for Plan A.
Well, let's see if your colleagues agree. Does anyone want to second that motion?
Yeah, I want to.
Do you want to second the motion and then comment? Okay, go ahead. Councilmember Salinas?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Councilmember Armanio on that. You know, I was looking at the maps and, well, I'll just, I'll keep it short. And, you know, I don't like Hayward to be split either. I certainly don't want, you know, West Mission Boulevard being split and being included with, you know, Pleasanton, Livermore. And so, I mean, it absolutely makes no sense. And so, anyways, I'll keep my comments on that. And if we can recommend Map A, it seems like that's what they're going to do tonight. I know there's going to be another meeting. But as of right now, I certainly will support Map A. Thank you.
Okay, I think Councilmember Lambnun is next. And then, Councilmember Marquez.
Okay. Thank you. I deeply respect the opinions of my colleagues on many things and, of course, on your strong protection of Hayward. I am deeply troubled about the Board settling on A. And I would urge us to not do that. The problem with Map A is that it, sorry, let me back up for a second. There is new state law that requires that people who live in lots of areas, people who live in a district, get to say where the lines should be. And it is now state law that that is part incorporated into the new maps. And so, there has been over 100 comments. Map A includes the smallest amount of those comments. It negates public input. And to me, that is not acceptable. I think Map D does a balanced job of community, somebody has to be split. The way population is in this county, that's how that works. And I would rather see that split happen in places where there are city councils that can kind of keep an eye on those areas. And so, Map D divides Oakland into two, Hayward into two, and Fremont into two, but allows communities that are smaller, that may not have as much opportunity to collaborate, to be together and have a unified voice. The other piece that is really critical is making sure that resources are balanced across the county. We know that doesn't happen now. And by preserving the status quo, which is Map A, we reinforce that all the, that we are okay with all the resources going to Oakland. I personally am not okay with that. And I say that as a member of this council and as a resident of Hayward, not as a member of the coalition that is working to make sure that community input happens in this. And so, I would urge us to not support Map A. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we'll go to Councilmember Marquez now.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager, can you please put up Map D? Again, I apologize. I'm not feeling too well, you guys, sorry.
That's okay. Let me do that real quick.
Thank you. Just want to visually make sure I'm viewing this correctly. So, D is splitting Hayward. So, South Hayward would be grouped with?
Supervis, it's like, it's cut in half. So, it's, so I don't know if you can see my cursor, but there's kind of, there's a line that comes here along Jackson. And then, it goes, almost looks like it goes right along Lake Soto because here's Mission Boulevard. So, the dividing line would be kind of right through the middle of the Jackson Triangle neighborhood.
Got it. So, what I'm seeing, pink would stay in 2. And then, above the green would move to 4. So, 2 would be Vaillée. And 4 would be Supervisor Miley.
Correct, correct.
Okay, okay. And do we know this is based off of population count? This is based off current numbers from the census? Is that correct?
Yes, you'll see these percentages. So, this is the variant from the 2010 census. So, for example, supervisory district 4, you'd see a decrease in population in that district by 3.82%. Supervisor, the District 2 would increase.
That's not a decrease in population. Can I?
Oh, sure, go ahead. Sorry, my, sorry, I apologize. Go for it, Councilmember Lambnun.
No, it's okay. So, the number, there is a, if you take the total population of Alameda County, which is about 1.6, 1.7 million people, divide it by 5, you get an ideal population for each district. And so, those numbers are the amount of deviation from that ideal population.
Thank you. See, like I said, I'm new to this topic, so I appreciate the technical clarification. Sorry.
With the aim being getting it closer to zero as possible. Right, okay. But.
Okay, so, just visually looking at this, one of the things that just jumps out at me is that the city of Hayward is the third largest city in Alameda County. And we have been competing, struggling for resources for decades. I feel like every year, it's a battle to figure out, how are we going to keep St. Rose open? You know, we've been very creative in allocating where it's appropriate CDBG funds. So, I am inclined to support Map D because I think it will provide an opportunity to advocate and leverage for more county resources and dollars to come to Hayward. I would imagine that having two supervisors represent our city. Historically, our supervisors have worked in collaboration with their cities. Our council members are very active. So, I just see it as a matter of collaborating, partnership, having a strategic focus on how to improve outcomes in Hayward. And I feel like we have a better shot at doing that if we recommend Map D. So, that would be my preference. And thank you, Councilmember Lambnun, for keeping us all informed. You've done an amazing job on your social media as well as council comments at the board meetings. So, thank you for your work and your volunteer efforts on this endeavor. And I hope that others will join me in looking, considering Map D. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, let's see, I will ask, Councilmember Wahab.
Thank you. I do appreciate a lot of work. I know that this has been kind of an ongoing process, the redistricting efforts. You know, a lot of the maps that have been coming up have been looking different per each one. And there has been a lot of input. I know earlier in this year, we actually, as a council, supported to ensure that community voices are heard, community members. And the redistricting effort is in line with community input. I fully support that. I will be abstaining on this particular item because I also believe that it is not appropriate for, you know, individuals to potentially vote on something that really does affect the community. I definitely have significant opinions on what's happening, but I also don't believe in gerrymandering districts. So, I will be abstaining. Thank you.
And, Councilmember Andrews, did you want to weigh in on this at all? We haven't heard from you.
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't quite sure what to say regarding this because I'm happy I'm going last, at least, because I'm very confused on the, from Map 2D, where the D map versus the other map. So, I was hoping maybe I can get a walkthrough once everyone was done commenting.
So, that's a good idea. And I'm going to go ahead and make my comments since I haven't commented either. But, and I'm going to say that I do agree with Councilmembers Lambnun and Marquez about D. And if you could just put it up again. And first of all, you know, where they're not, they are splitting Hayward so that rather than have our entire city in one supervisory district, there will be two different supervisors representing us. And I think that probably, I can't tell, it looks to me like certainly the bigger part of the city of Hayward would, the western part definitely would remain with Supervisor Vaillée. So, we would continue to be represented by Supervisor Vaillée, who has represented us. I will say that the one I don't like, I can't remember if it's B or C, but it's the one that takes him totally out of Hayward. It splits it between District 1 and District 4.
I believe that's Map B.
Map B?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't like that. I mean, I do think we, you know, we have been representing, you know, I mean, of course, you know, things can change. Supervisors change. But still, I don't like being put into, you know, into two totally different districts. So, Map D keeps a good part of Hayward in, you know, in Supervisor, in the current District 2, but also puts a part of it into District 4, where also the communities, some of the unincorporated communities that do share some interest with that side of Hayward, Ashland, Cherryland, would also be in that, in that district, I believe, under, you know, in 4, are in 4 now. And I think would remain there. So, it would give us, you know, it would give us that access, that, to two different supervisors. And yet, keep a large part of the city in the same district it's in now. And I think in all, in looking at the overall picture, if you look at the way these districts are divided now, that for Pleasanton to be in District 4 requires this like appendage that comes out, like a dragon head or something with a neck, to take Pleasanton. And we all know, I mean, I especially know, working with the mayors of Alameda County and, you know, meeting with them monthly, all these areas, that the Tri-Valley, Dublin, Livermore, and Pleasanton are a pretty common interest group and, or, you know, have similar challenges and issues. And I think what Map D does is actually correct that situation, which I think Map A does not. Map A, I believe, it's very hard to remember. I think Map A keeps Pleasanton in that District 4 and, or some other district, and separates it from Livermore. And, yeah, there you are. And that's Map, which one, the A now that you're showing is? Yeah, that, that doesn't, now, I mean, why am I concerned about Pleasanton? Well, you know, I mean, I just think in all fairness that the, that a little bit different configuration is maybe more appropriate and especially that area, knowing the similarities and issues that they face. So, I personally do think that Map D came up with the best, you know, idea. And I can't remember now, does that leave Oakland being represented by two supervisors? Yeah. And, you know, that's another thing. I mean, when, we do see it in terms of resources when the city of Oakland has three supervisors that represent them. And while we're not as big as Oakland, and I have nothing against Oakland, I might want them to get what they need. But I, but, you know, I, it creates some inequities. And so, anyway, I, after having considered this, you know, do agree that, you know, we, a lot of Hayward would remain in District 2. Some of it would move into District 4, where really, in that northern part and eastern part of Hayward, you know, there is some more connection to that District 4, the rest of District 4, the unincorporated area. So, I think what we have here, so I think we have a motion that was seconded, but no one else has spoken up in support of?
And Councilmember Andrews has her hand raised.
And Councilmember Andrew, oh, I'm sorry. Do you have your?
Yeah.
Sure, sure. But let's go to Councilmember Andrews next. And then, I'll come back to you. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to, I don't know if it's possible, if Councilmember Lambnun can confirm how many, do we know how many votes, again, were, you said that there weren't as many votes for Map A versus the other maps? So, can you, can you give us a little bit of a breakdown of the votes for the maps?
Sure. So, there is a, fortunately, I can't share. But the, there were well over 100, I want to say 150 or something, different community of interest inputs. And when the consultant presented the maps, they demonstrated this one reflects these communities of interest, these reflect this one. And in the staff report for tonight's meeting, there's a nice slide deck that demonstrates or that talks about, in this map, these communities of interest are protected, these are split, et cetera. And Map D has the most number of communities of interest protected. So, communities have spoken up. Sometimes they're groups. Often, they're just individuals speaking up for their communities and saying, I want, you know, my community looks like this and its boundaries are this way. And we share commerce with these communities or faith traditions. We have these kinds of concerns, these kinds of needs. And so, we should be in a district together. And Map D is the one that respects the most of those. Map A respects only six of them. Everybody else is 20 or more. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Did you have any other comments at this point?
No, thank you.
Okay, so that leaves us with, yeah, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, yes, Councilmember Salinas.
So I guess the question I have is, so let me, let me back up. So is there, and I was just looking right now again, I hadn't seen it. So who are these communities of interest? I guess that's the first question. You said there was 100 comments. Who were they? Where'd they come from?
Yeah, so they're folks from all over the county. There are students, there are business owners, they are people in need, people who, people who attended community meetings. Yeah, they're just residents, all kinds of folks from all over.
I mean, are they, are they voices from Hayward, or are they voices from Pleasanton? I mean, you can have 100 people from, you know, San Ramon, Pleasanton, Livermore, Dublin. I mean, I guess my question is, is the, the input that are you getting that have been inputted, and, you know, where are they from? I guess, you know, specifically where are they from?
Specifically where they're from, the predominant number of folks, because we had the greatest outreach, was actually this area.
So Cherryland, Ashland?
Hayward.
Hayward.
Yeah. There was community outreach at both the Stacks Center event, the Mariachi Festival, the, both libraries. We got a good amount of input from the Week's Library, as well as some from the Hayward Main Library. So a lot of them are Eden area, fair amount, a good amount from Tri-Valley, some from Oakland. The smallest participation was from the Fremont Union City area, for whatever reason.
That's the first question. So my other question is, is, so I get the logic, more supervisors, more, you know, perhaps more advocacy on the count, or more advocacy on the board for, for resources in Hayward. And I'll name it, St. Rose Hospital, right? And my, my main concern is, you know, you know, when it comes to county, you know, there's a lot of things that the county is responsible for, but my central concern when it comes to county is the distribution of resources to St. Rose Hospital. I mean, for me, you know, the county takes care of a lot of things, right? And, and I don't know if it's just a lack of advocacy, or maybe, you know, lack of lobbying, or lack, or, you know, whatever the, however we explain it, we just have not been, we have not been receiving the resources. And, and, and that, I'm just, and I'm speaking for South Hayward in general, that, you know, hasn't gotten its share, to put it that way. And my central concern, and I don't know how Councilmember Sermanio feels about this, but my central concern is that, once we start dividing Hayward, then we will be split. You know, we may have more voices, but we may also have more voices not on our side. You know, having, you know, having, you know, nothing, nothing against the, you know, the, you know, Supervisor Halbert, or even, you know, Vallier, or Miley, but dividing the city of Hayward, I think it's a, that is, that's a big issue for me. And, you know, I don't know if I'm willing to take that risk to, to gerrymander.
We're not dividing the city. We're just putting our city into, you know, parts of our city into two different supervisory.
Dividing it, I mean, you know, I'm concerned that one district is Mission West, or Mission East, right? Hayward Hills, which, you know, is, you know, higher income, higher, you know, educational attainment, higher, et cetera. And, and then you have, on the, on the other side of the line is west of Mission Boulevard, Jackson Triangle, South Hayward, you know, and so we're essentially, I mean, you know, Councilmember Wahab just said it, that we're, we're essentially gerrymandering our city, right? So I'm, I'm very concerned. I'm not going to abstain. I think this is, I think this is a vote we have to.
Well, let me tell you, the vote, the vote is not going to be, this is what the city of Hayward wants, because three councilmembers said it. What the, what this is asking is, or what the recommendation is, is that you give feedback and let me, with a great deal of help from staff, I believe, draft a letter conveying Hayward's opinions. And if this council is split on the maps, that would be conveyed. I would convey that.
My, so, so let me, let me just put this on the, let me lend this, then, put this on the table. My concern is that, once we start splitting, dividing, however you want to call it, my concern is that the more people we have representing us, may not necessarily be a good thing for us. And I feel that if we have one, one member of the, of the board, supervisors, that, you know, that, you know, is our, is our fierce leader, we support him or her, and we go to them for, you know, for our, you know, for our district needs, and, and we fight for what we need to accomplish. And I feel that the more supervisors we have in our city, the, the less of an advantage we have, so. That's how I feel.
All right. I don't.
Yeah, and I just, Councilmember Lambnun just pointed out, I think I had said the dividing line in the middle of Hayward for option map D lives around Soto, it's actually Huntwood. So it kind of draws along Huntwood through the middle of Hayward is kind of where the dividing line of the district is.
Still against it.
Okay, and Councilmember.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I was listening to you, I just also wanted to clarify.
And Councilmembers, Sermanio.
Yes. I, I agree with colleague Salinas in the sense that when you start splitting, eventually it will lead to more splits. Oakland is fine. Oakland has close to 800,000 people, you can split it many, many ways, different areas. Hayward, we're 160, I don't think it's splitable. Again, that split, really, if you look at it, it's perceived as the more affluent folks on the hill and the less affluent folks on the lowlands, the flatlands. To me, that's dangerous. We have a supervisor who, in my opinion, has done a tremendous job and is always there fighting for, fighting to make sure that St. Rose receives its, missly, $3 million as opposed to the $16 million that it should be receiving. And unfortunately, he doesn't really have much support from the other four supervisors, otherwise St. Rose wouldn't have, wouldn't have any problems at all. Can you imagine closing St. Rose? What would happen to the west side of the Hayward that was split? I, I don't see this. I would rather have one strong voice for Hayward. Most of the cities are whole, and the major, and Oakland is split, you know, Pleasanton split, and it's kind of ironic that the split then takes the upper half of our city and places them close to Pleasanton and Dublin. I would rather have one voice on that supervisor, Diaz, to make sure that they, he or she really fought for us 100%. No, I'm still convinced that A is the best option, simply because for those reasons, and it's just logical for us to be whole. If we were 400, 500,000 people, okay, maybe there's a split, but we're only 160,000. We have special needs. Let's keep taking our city forward with one supervisor. I don't want to say anything negative about other supervisors, but in my mind, our supervisor has done a very good job, and I think he will continue to do a very good job. So I will still support one A. Colleague Lambnun, you're speaking of Diaz and Dog, not BS and Bad. Okay, all right. And Mayor, you're also speaking of Diaz and Dog and not BS and Bad, correct? That's what I assumed. Okay, all right. And I believe also that colleague Marquez was also Dog and not Bad. Okay, all right.
Okay, for Dog.
All right.
Okay.
All right, so anyway, I encourage you to go for Hayward. Thank you.
Okay, so, does anybody else? I think we, I mean, I think Councilmember Hob has said she wants to abstain, and that leaves six of us, and I'm not sure we've really heard from Councilmember Andrews definitively. And, and I'm not saying that you have to. If you don't, if you really don't, you know.
Should we call the vote?
You know, we can vote on this, we can vote on this, the motion on the floor to have us all support map A, but that is not going to, from what I can see, carry, but.
Just write in a letter to the.
It's really just, yes, it's a letter, and the letter can certainly reflect the reality of the split.
Originally, we had said that there was a resolution attached to this item, so that if, if the council was in consensus on a single option, we could have, the council could have adopted a resolution. I think given the split on the council, you know, if we can, we can draft a letter, instead of taking a vote, there's no reason to take a vote, because we know the, it sounds like, as the mayor has indicated, the motion will fail, but we could write a letter sort of encapsulating the comments from this evening, and the split on the council, and why there was, why there was concern, and we can also express our concern about the sort of lack of funding, the concern for preservation of St. Rose, and some of those other issues that have been raised. So that would be my recommendation. But Mayor, if you wanted to go a different way, we could do that as well.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember.
And if you do that, and it'd be nice if we went in that direction, I would also just ask if perhaps you run that letter by, you know, both respectfully Councilmember Lambnun and Councilmember Marquez, and then run it by Councilmember Sermanio and I, so we can.
Yes, yes.
So that this truly can be a, a joint letter.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we'll try, I really think we can fashion what, some of the concerns that have been raised here, but I do think we're split in our, in our, talk about splitting Hayward, you know, sometimes we split, and we all represent Hayward, you know, but, but I think that, oh, let's see, Councilmember Andrews, yes, please, go ahead.
So I am still split in my mind about this, because I do feel that, I do understand both sides of A and D, and I think the concern I have is the, if the supervisors, I don't know what the vote was like, but if they are saying that they rather represent A than D, then I'm confused on if they want to represent us, if they're not choosing D themselves. So that's what really is having me have pause, because I feel like it is more powerful to have two representatives, but only if that representative is going to truly represent us. And so I'm a little bit torn on this as well. So if we can't just craft a letter stating those concerns, that, that would be preferable versus taking a vote.
All right, so I might need some help from the city. There is a motion on the floor and a second, and I almost feel like because of that, we need to vote on it.
Mayor?
The maker can withdraw the motion, I believe.
Well, once that, we have two, we have two councilmembers who have not stated how they may vote, maybe they'll vote A, I don't know. Let's put it to a vote. Sorry to interrupt.
I'll ask the maker of the motion if you would like to, oh, no, I'm sorry, that you are the maker of the motion. So you want to keep the motion on the floor to support, to say that the Hayward City Council supports.
Map A.
You know that those of us who don't are going to weigh in ourselves anyway, and say, we didn't support that. If you want to.
If the, if the maker, if the maker withdraws.
Councilmember Salinas, can you turn your microphone on? Sorry.
Of course I can. Thank you. If the maker withdraws, and perhaps moves the item with the understanding that we draft a letter and have, and, you know, and have it passed by, you know.
Yeah, I think we would draft it, send it out to everybody.
I think we can then come to something, but of course, that takes the, you know, the maker to remove it.
So it would be a withdrawal of the motion with the understanding, a general consensus, there would be no motion needed to have this letter drawn explaining our split?
You could change the motion to make that your motion, just to direct staff to craft a letter reflecting the split on the council and, and running it by the councilmembers.
And it would be shared with us before we went.
Absolutely.
To our supervisors?
Yes.
Is that a general consensus from our?
Yes, and the opportunity to comment back and then revise, although this is going to have to, people are going to have to pay attention and respond right away, because we do have a deadline, but.
Yes, yes.
Are folks in TV land in consensus with this, colleagues Andrews, Wahab, and Marquez?
I'm sorry, what was that you just said?
Our, our three colleagues on Zoom, do they agree with this?
I think it's the best approach, given that we don't have consensus, and we have someone who is abstaining, so I think the best approach is just to draft a letter that memorializes our thoughts.
Yeah.
And then we'll have a chance to review via email.
Okay, so that's five votes. Okay, good, all right. I will withdraw my motion, secondor?
All right, so.
Yes, thank you.
I think we're in consensus. You know, I'm seeing that there, there is another request to speak by someone in attendance who, and since there are only very few people, I, I would like, is there anyone who objects to briefly reopening the public hearing? We do want to hear from the public on this issue.
The only, to, just a quick follow-up, the, the only thing I would ask the city manager is when this letter is drafted, that it doesn't reflect that the council is split, and the council, just, just sort of highlighting the conversation we had and.
Well, I think it would, two maps have basically been mentioned, A and D.
Yeah.
I don't think, so I didn't hear any support for B or C, and I know I voiced opposition to, I think it was B, right? B. So I think that would be the thrust of it, you know, that, that some of the councilmembers supported this, some of the council. There are similarities between those two maps, too, in that they, they both kind of keep the bulk of our district in District 2, so.
And I should also mention, just to follow up with Councilmember Andrews, you know, I don't know what the supervisor said, I don't know what their, what their rationale was, what Ms. Dean mentioned was all news to me at the moment that she delivered it, so.
I'm sorry, did she, is she is the one who spoke earlier, isn't she?
I just wanted to make that point.
Oh, okay, then I'm not going to reopen the public hearing, because she actually already did. She, she is the one with her hands raised, and she's.
They were unanimously, unanimously.
Unfortunately, our rules don't really allow for that, so, all right. So with that, I think, so you were willing to withdraw the motion, we've agreed to a plan that we will draft a letter, we will send it out, we will reflect what has taken place in this discussion. And I do think we have something to say in that, you know, those are the two maps that members of council, you know, different members of council preferred, and maybe state some of the reasons stated, just for the supervisor's consideration, they're most likely going to do what they want to do anyway. So, but, no, not that, I mean, not that I don't think they listen to us, I'm sure they listen to us, even the ones who don't represent us, but, but we will attempt to do that, so we can just at least go officially on record as to having had a discussion, and this is what the discussion produced. Some differing thoughts. Councilmember Lambnun, did you want to?
I just wanted to ask a question from my colleagues, if that's okay.
You want to what?
I wanted to ask the maker and the secondor a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So, gentlemen, I just wanted to make sure I understood your position. If I heard you right, it's primarily about keeping Hayward whole and less about what happens with the rest of the map. So if A, if D had Hayward as a whole, there may or may not have been as much of an objection. The primary concern was keeping Hayward whole, is that accurate?
I would rather have it whole.
Okay.
I agree with that line, and I think I'm fine with D, Dog.
Okay. Is that, sorry, let me just finish this real quick with.
Mayor, Mayor, sorry, can you just ask everyone in the chamber to please speak in their microphone? Not everybody is.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Marquez, for that reminder. And Mark, sorry, Councilmember Salinas, did I accurately capture?
My central concern is that too many supervisor representing us may not be in our best interest.
Okay.
And, and splitting, and splitting Hayward puts us in that situation. And so that's.
Thank you, I appreciate that. The reason I ask is that there is actually the opportunity still, the window is still open to submit a different map. And so, you know, I'm not going to ask us to craft that tonight, because that would be madness, but as we work on a letter that, or other, anyway, I just, thank you.
All right, we will try to do that. We will try to reflect the comments that were made this evening, and staff can always check back individually. And, uh, staff can always check back individually as they're drafting this letter to, to see if, if they want to clarify what they heard. So, um, we will attempt to have some comments based on this discussion to give to the supervisors. It's clearly not a unified, you know, voice supporting, but that's okay too, because that reflects who we are too. And so, all right, I do appreciate everybody's, um, input on this. And we will attempt to get to something that we can submit that reflects, reflects what we think as a group. And, um, with that, and thank you, everybody. And I do really want to, again, thank Councilmember Lambnun for really being out there early on. Getting us to even look at these maps was, which was kind of hard in the beginning, but, you know. So, with that, we will.